Yeah.
I am ready.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Focus, please.
Well, yeah.
I would like to call to order the July 9th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting and read this, "The Opportunities for the Public to Access and Participate in the Hybrid Meeting" are posted on the Almarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Almarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. So with that, I'll ask Caroline to call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
Mr. Missel?
Here.
Mr. Karazana?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Present.
And Mr. Moore and Ms. Farhawk are both absent today.
Great, thank you. With that, we have established a quorum. I'll now open it up to matters not listed on the agenda from the public. If there are any matters from the public not listed on tonight's agenda, okay, I'm going to rephrase this. We are looking for comment now on items that are not listed on the public hearing portion of the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? No, sir. Yes, we understand. That's why we rehearsed this to try to be as clear as possible.
Tom and I didn't rehearse this because we didn't know what was going on.
Gotcha. Good to see you.
Good evening. My name's Neil Williamson, and I serve as president of the Free Enterprise Forum, a privately funded public policy organization focused on local government in central Virginia. While Virginia State Code mandates that localities review their comprehensive plan every five years, Almarle embraces this task with gusto rarely seen anywhere else. The latest iteration, AC44, is a three-plus-year planning process designed to capture community sentiment about the future. In recent plans, this community-centered engagement approach has resulted in an unworkable document similar to Santa's List. Is this really what a comp plan should do? Should a comp plan be a laundry list of often conflicting citizen priorities or opinions? Or should this time-limited document focus on specific direction for future infrastructure spending needed to accommodate anticipated growth? If you go with the second option, this would mean having the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors answer the hard questions. Perhaps this comprehensive plan should be less comprehensive. The Free Enterprise Forum believes the comprehensive plan should answer seven basic questions with your 20-year horizon. One, what, if any, commercial and residential growth is anticipated by 2044? If there is growth, do you have adequately land properly designated and zoned for this anticipated need? Where? Does the existing infrastructure exist to support the anticipated growth? What impacts will the anticipated growth have on existing infrastructure, both man-made and environmental? If infrastructure is lacking, what, if anything, should local government do? Who will pay for it? In the next five years, what specific tasks will local government achieve to move forward to the 20-year goals in the plan? And how does any anticipated growth impact existing county residents? Goals and objectives must be prioritized. If everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. Almarle County has the chance to use AC44 as a tipping point, where the county makes a conscious decision to set real priorities and spend at least as much staff time implementing the goals of AC44 as planning its replacement. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you'd state your name and general place of residence, please.
My name is Tom Loach. I'm from Crozay.
Thank you. Could you just move them? Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
With regard to AC44, I'm here tonight to discuss one of the more important ramifications of the plan, that being the section on land use, and more specifically, the preservation of rural land and the expansion of our growth areas. After reading AC44, it appears clear, at least to me, that the intention of the county is to support the expansion of our growth areas, or to put another way, end the current status of preservation of the rural areas in Almarle County. In 1991, County Executive Robert Tucker published a definitive paper on the subject of Land Use Taxation Program in Almarle County. In his paper, Mr. Tucker communicated two important points: one, the reason for the implementation of land use, and two, who pays for the program. Regarding the reason for Almarle County joining the state program, Mr. Tucker stated the following: "The current land use program for preserving rural land has been an objective of the county for two decades, and the benefits derived from the program are significant to the community at large." Nowhere in Mr. Tucker's publications does he express any additional reasons for the implementation of the Land Use Taxation Program other than rural preservation. In order to pay for the program of land use preservation, Mr. Tucker wrote the following: "The cost of land use is not hidden, since it is implicit in the concept of land use, that the tax burden is shifted to other taxpayers." In Mr. Tucker's paper published in 1991, the cost for land use was $4.2 million. By 2005, it had risen to $13 million, and by 2023, it was $14 million. Using these dates and amounts, it can be extrapolated to show that the investment of county residents in rural protection since 1975 has risen to over a quarter of a billion dollars. All that said, and despite the cost of land use and the fact it does not fully stop development, I fully support the status quo of the current program. As one of the taxpayers who pays for the program, I support, however, it comes with a caveat, that being, if you want me, and I'm sure tens of thousands of others, taxpayers, to continue to pay for the support to program, you must continue to preserve rural land in Almarle County. The support for rural preservation must not be for just a year, next year, or five years, nor can you nickel-and-dime the development of rural land and still call it preservation. It's a situation, be it the commission cannot or will not make a commitment to rural preservation. It must then recommend the elimination of the Land Use Taxation Program, since there is no longer a need for additional tax dollars to pay for an obsolete program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to matters not on the agenda, including the work session? Seeing none, anybody online?
No, sir.
Chair, there was for copies of those comments. I could barely understand the last ones.
Yeah, there's a request for both of those comments to be those comments to be provided to the clerk so she can distribute them.
I will have.
So Loach, just wanted to make sure you heard us. We'd love a copy of your comments, please. Thank you. Good, good point. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I believe we have two items on the consent agenda, both draft meeting minutes. Does anyone like, would anyone like to make a motion on those?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All right, could we have the roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, actually, now you're on. So the next point of business is, I would like to recommend that we flip-flop the work session and the public hearing so that we can have the public hearing first, and that's out of deference to the applicant, and then move on and have time to review the work session following the public hearing. Is that okay with everybody?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we move the public hearing to the first part of the agenda. Second.
Any discussion? We have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will move on to SP 2024-6, Piedmont Grounds Management, and I'll ask staff for the report.
Good evening, Chair Missel, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kevin McCollum. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division at Almarle County Community Development. Tonight, I'll be giving staff's report for Piedmont Grounds Management Landscape Contractor, a special use permit application. Subject property for this request is located at 4842 Richmond Road. It's about half a mile from the Fluviana County border. The property and surrounding area is zoned rural areas, and it's subject to the entrance corridor guidelines along Richmond Road. The surrounding area is mostly rural area residential, with single-family detached houses on lots that range from two to six acres. The slide shows the existing conditions of the site from Richmond Road. The property is a little over three acres. About a half of an acre has been developed with a Class A country store, formerly known as the Boyd Tavern Market, and briefly Lakeside Market. To the right of this building is the proposed location for the landscape contractor business. It's mostly undeveloped, but some of the land has been cleared. On the screen here is the conceptual plan for the development. The proposal is to establish a landscape contractor business with an office, parking area, and landscape materials storage area. Typical business operations include employees arriving at the site in the morning, gathering materials and equipment for off-site work during the day, and then returning to the site in the evening to drop off equipment and materials and leave in their own personal vehicles. On the screen here is an illustrative plan. So in addition to the building, parking area, and storage area, this plan shows entrance corridor street trees along the frontage and a 30-foot screening buffer. The use buffer is something staff is recommending as a condition of approval. The use will be required to be screened, but the 30-foot buffer and 50-foot setback are additional regulations staff is recommending. Given the proposal is in the entrance corridor, the development will be required to go through Architectural Review Board review, which will review the proposed landscaping and building design. Since it's a new commercial use, the project will also need a site development plan and Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program Plan. Approvals from the Health Department will be needed for any proposed drain fields and wells, and VDOT approval of the entrance will be required for the proposed entrance. At this time, these reviewers have reviewed the plans and have provided no comments, or sorry, no concerns or objections. The special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in our zoning ordinance. Generally, staff believes that the proposed landscape contractor will not be detrimental to adjacent properties, will not change the character of the nearby area, will be in harmony with the zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff has drafted a few recommended conditions to ensure those factors are upheld. The first is pretty standard. Development of the site must be in general accord with the conceptual plan. This is to ensure the buildings, parking areas, and storage areas are in the same general location as provided. The second is to apply industrial setbacks and buffer requirements. So this condition is consistent with Arbor Life, the one previously approved landscape contractor use in the rural areas. And then last, the last condition is to address some previously unapproved clearing that was done in the WPO buffer. This condition is to ensure that the applicant replants that important natural resource area. To conclude, staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and no detrimental impacts to adjoining properties are anticipated. Staff has no additional concerns that aren't addressed by the proposed conditions. The staff is recommending approval of this special use permit application with the conditions as recommended in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I do have motions and a couple other slides with some information as needed, but I'll take any questions now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great report. Any questions of the staff? Start with Commissioner Murray.
Nope, I'm good.
I'm okay.
No, I don't.
I do, just one quick. So on on the applicant's concept plan, it shows that the shed and the convenience store seem to be in critical slopes. There you go, right there.
Yeah, the the proposals for everything on the right side of the screen. The existing convenience store has existed for a long time. As you note, it is within the WPO buffer, so I think we would consider that a non-conforming use. Just to clarify, the proposals for the landscape contractor, and it's going to be, you know, a separate use from the Class A country store.
But the landscape, the person, the applicant owns that entire parcel.
Yep, he owns the entire parcel.
So the parcel will be put into some, I mean, right now, it's a vacant convenience store, what a kind of vacant shed. But I would expect, and perhaps the applicants can speak to this, that there's an anticipation that those two pieces, those two pieces of property or those two entities will be brought back online at some point in time, otherwise I might have something else to say.
They did receive a zoning clearance approval recently, so as far as staff's concerned, that's received its approval, so the country store can receive zoning clearance, so it's approved for reopening.
You've anticipated and answered my response and answered my question. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Just had, I guess, one question. On condition number two, and we could talk about this more a little bit later, but I'm curious, if you look at the plan itself, you know, the building is nicely nestled in the setbacks, but it also shows the landscape material storage area encroaching into that setback. I'm curious, you know, not to think ill of the occupant, but are they able to put things behind the building between the property line and the building envelope?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the, so the way we've written the conditions is that we would like to see a 30-foot use buffer. So the storage could be up to that 30-foot use buffer. The setback applies to the building. So the landscape material storage is not a building, so it, you know, it can go within the 50-foot setback, but not the 30-foot use buffer.
And in reality, that 30-foot use buffer, I guess you're suggesting that it be planted, right?
Yes, that's correct. We'll review screening with the site plan.
Okay, so that would provide some sort of maybe a boundary or something.
Yep, so that buffer theoretically could be extended on this proposal, but staff will be reviewing screening along that property line, and we'll ensure that at the site plan phase.
Got it, sir.
Chair, may I follow up on that comment? When you say extended, are you, can you be a bit more clear? Can you enumerate what extended means there?
Sure, I mean, they're showing that screening buffer as being green on this proposal.
Yes.
I think they're doing that just to make it look pretty, in a sense. Staff is making a condition that they provide a 30-foot screening buffer, but we'll have the ability to review it during the site plan and put screening or landscaping anywhere along that property line as we see fit.
Okay, so there could be a possibility that we bring it down to the entrance?
That's correct.
So that the house there, because really what we're doing is, realizing this is just illustrative, that the screening as it's being depicted right now is really screening just the side of the house, it's not screening the property. And so if I were to sort of want, if I were to want to add on or sort of push us in a direction as for us to ensure that that screening comes down as far to the entrance as possible, as opposed to starting it there at the curve into the parking envelope.
Yeah, this one shows, it's an illustrative plan, so it shows street trees. We're not conditioning, you know, the location of the street trees at this time, but they are showing, you know, that street trees can be met with the site plan.
While you're on this image, one follow-up question. The blue line that's right above the landscape material storage area, is that a contour line?
I'm not exactly sure. I think that might be proposed grading that the applicant's showing. I defer to Kelsey to answer that one.
Got it. Okay. Great. Any other questions for staff? All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's report.
There we go. Good evening, Chair Missel, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with Shimp Engineering. I'm here tonight representing Piedmont Grounds Management, who is the applicant for this special use permit request. Jordan Kaufman is the property owner. He's also the owner of Piedmont Grounds Management, and he is incredibly sorry he can't be here with us tonight. He is currently in a class and could not get out of class this evening. And so I'm here representing this project on his behalf. So, little bit of background into Piedmont Grounds Management. It's been in business for about 21 years. Jordan is a pretty young guy, so he started this, I think, when he was about 16 years old, around there, and has been running it, his own business, his own landscaping business, ever since. He has approximately seven employees, depending on the season. A little less than that in the winter, in the wintertime, a little more than that in the summertime as business picks up. He serves both residential and commercial clients, primarily serving clients in Crozay and Charlottesville. This property came online, and he really saw it as an opportunity to find a permanent home for his business in a very convenient location, located right off 250, very close to Interstate 64, easy access to all of his clients. He's currently renting space on a property that is for sale, and so we are in crunch time for finding him and his employees a permanent home for this business. So looking at the property here, this is kind of the full property looking east. We're looking at the historic Boyd Tavern Market property. So you can see the existing market, Class A country store use here on the left side of your screen, and this existing shed. And then in the far side, there's an open field, and that is where Jordan is looking to locate his equipment and material storage building. So this is just kind of a closer up of this, of where the landscape contractor use will be centralized on the property. And the property looking west, towards Charlottesville. So getting into our concept plan here, I'll kind of touch on this blue line quickly, if this is the one you were referring to. This blue line here is the water protection ordinance buffer, and so there is an existing drain field. I will note that a lot of this is based off of GIS information, and final surveys are still coming in, but there are some existing structures, as you'd note, and existing drain field that encroaches into that water protection ordinance buffer. Anything that is proposed is new, any type of landscape, you know, land disturbance outside will be, you know, completely outside of the landscape buffer. You're talking about this blue line here. This is a contour line shown in this area here. And so you can see that we're proposing a new entrance. This is the high side of the property. This is kind of the best visibility on the site. We really do have kind of limited areas where we can locate the entrance to this property. This is really our location to have a safe entrance to get in and out of the property. And then our landscaping equipment building envelope, parking envelope, just kind of, these are generous size envelopes, and that's exactly what they are, is an envelope. This is not exact building footprint or anything, just permitting flexibility in the future as we get to site plan stage. I'll speak a little bit about this, you know, just the screening buffer and how we have it visually represented. So when we originally submitted this application, we had the rural area setback shown on the property. So we had a 25-foot side setback on both sides. And recently, kind of been working with staff and kind of getting to a place where we could have a recommendation for approval, we increased those setbacks to 50 feet. This is a triangular-shaped property. It's approximately three acres. That reduced our buildable area by about 14,000 square feet, I believe. And so we, you know, are able to make that work and wanted to make it work, obviously, especially with this location of this house right here, to increase the setbacks. But we did previously also have just a 20-foot buffer shown as well. And so we've increased that to a 30-foot screening buffer, the way that staff has presented it in their condition. As Kevin said, it will extend along the entirety of this property line. However, since we lost about 14,000 square feet of buildable area, and I should say about 7,000 square feet just on this side, we wanted to ensure that there was flexibility, that we could still have a drain field and potentially some material storage that, you know, might, well, specifically the drain field in the entrance that will encroach into that 30-foot buffer with the material storage in between that 50-foot setback and the 30-foot screening buffer. So just wanted to kind of touch on that a little more, since that was part of the conversation. Going into some operational details, the hours of operation are typically 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. This is a site where employees arrive on the property, they pick up their equipment for the day, and they head out to their respective job sites. They leave their personal vehicles on the site, they come back at the end of the day, drop off all their company equipment, get in their personal vehicles, and go home. There is no retail component or customer-facing component as part of the site. This will not be a heavy traffic user. We're probably looking at, you know, 25 trips a day, and that's in and out of the property, that we're looking at maximum. So very minimal transportation impact. As far as what's going to be stored on the site, company vehicles and trailers stored on the site, some material storage that primarily consists of mulch and gravel for PGM to use out on their clients' properties. And this is just an equipment building precedent. I will note, and as Kevin noted, this property is subject to ARB, so this might be, end up being the best equipment building, looking equipment building in Almarle County. This is just a precedent. We will have to have, I'm sure, some, we can't have blank facades facing the entrance corridor, but I just wanted to give an idea, this is really something that we might think of as a farm structure, and Jordan will be using that for his landscaping business and landscape equipment storage. And then just noting some consistencies with the comprehensive plan. This is directly consistent with supporting a strong agricultural and forestal economy in the rural areas. As Kevin noted in his staff report, the strategy in the comprehensive, the 2015 comprehensive plan was the county should consider amending the zoning ordinance to allow landscape services and storage of landscape materials in the rural area. That was implemented in 2020 with a zoning text amendment that enabled us to even be before you tonight. So there has only been one other approved landscape contractor in the county. This is the second one that is being pursued in front of the Planning Commission. And so we hope that we can gain your support tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, not a question, but a comment. Strategy 4E in the comprehensive plan has encouraged the use of native plants and landscaping to protect and provide habitat for native biodiversity, save water, and to connect landowners to the local ecosystem. Just as a free piece of advice that I hope you'll convey, there is a program in the state of Virginia and Almarle County where we actually pay landowners to do things like convert lawns to native plants. It would be in their best interest to be skilled in doing that. And since you have to have a buffer of native plants anyway, you have a great demonstration area there where you can use as a demonstration area for native plants. You can even have parent material right there next to your landscaping business for native plants. So this is a great sort of potential win-win for the applicant if they want to take advantage of it, and it's certainly a service that we need more of in the county.
Perfect. Thank you for, I will certainly pass that along to Jordan. I'm sure he'd, going through all of this process, I'm sure he'd be very receptive to any additional funds to get this off the ground and make it happen.
It pays for a majority of the costs of installation for a variety of different practices. So it's, you know, the homeowner wins, or the local business, or school, or whoever's applying, but then also the landscaper gets that money as well, so.
And win-win. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Claiborne?
Yes, just one question. Thank you, Ms. Schlein. My question is regarding the narrative provided. I'm on page
My question is regarding the narrative provided. I'm on page three. It talks about fertilizers, chemicals, and fuel storage. They're not going to be kept in bulk quantities, but I was curious, will it be large enough quantity to require like containment for like a spill or anything like that?
That, that's a great question. So I think we'll have to, I don't believe so. It's all very, like, they don't have any large clients, I would say, where they would need to keep anything on site in that amount of bulk, but I, I believe as part of the site plan process, we'll be going through all this with, with the fire marshal to make sure that everything is above bar here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karazan?
So I do have a question on the entrance. It seems like there's like a berm on the site. It burns up, and then so as, as you go to the end is where it tapers down, and that's where you're, or you called it the high site, the high, the high part of the site. But it's right by the neighbor's entrance, so both entrances are. So is, is the owner ready to extend and have more landscape to create separation between those two entrances? Has that been discussed at all?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think anything, so for, for the entrance, we'll have to ensure that we maintain site distance and that we're not planting any landscaping in our view triangles. But I mean, other, other than that, I, you know, I think he is fully on board. He, he owns a landscape business, and he's, you know, told me on multiple occasions, he's ready to plant whatever he needs. He has the labor, and he can source the materials to, to get it done.
Yeah, because it seemed just kind of, when I was first looking at it, the images helped because you could, you could definitely see the, but it just seemed odd that we put the entrance right, right by the neighbors.
We would move it over if, 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 you know, there was a kind of a better location, but that, there's kind of a crest in Route 250 as we get to that western property edge. And to, to see over that crest, it's really the best location. But what I will say is, it is going to be minimal traffic, just given that there's no customer retail-facing approach, but we can certainly add additional landscaping.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chris Bivens?
I'm going to just follow up on, on my colleague's comment there. Good to see you this evening, and thank you for making, as always, your plans so that someone with aging eyes can review them without much cross-eyedness. So the question that I had there was, since, since you're going to have like five, let's say 10, 10 people who are going to be coming in there, perhaps two people per vehicle when they leave, so maybe five vehicles that leave, I didn't understand, or I was hoping to have a better understanding of why we wouldn't sort of try and bring a driveway through at the back end of the convenience store. So why we couldn't come in that way and use that, since there are so few people coming into the property? Why did it, why, just a sense of why it needed to have its own designated street? And it's, or designated entry as opposed to coming off of where it says the R there on Route 250?
Yeah, I mean, it really comes down to site distance and that this is just, even though this is an existing entrance and, you know, it predates current VDOT regulations, the, the thought behind this is that this is a new permitted use on the property. This is a new permitted entrance. And so once that, you know, goes across VDOT's desk, they want to see the entrance in the best location.
Okay, that, I understand that because according, I'm sort of aligning up with my colleague here about trying to give as much buffer to the house as possible so that, so that they don't feel as if somehow or another, they've been exposed over a period of years where there's just been a field there, because there really was, hasn't been, except for somebody who did some clearing, or they weren't supposed to do some clearing there. But other than that, the neighbors have been used to having just sort of a quiet existence there. And now all of a sudden, if I understand it, the, any kind of trailers will be in that very fancy barn. There won't be trailers sort of hanging out on the parking lot so that.
There, well, I'll say there, there might be some trailers in this parking envelope as well, but I will say all of that is going to have to be screened from the entrance corridor.
Okay, and hopefully screened from the next door neighbors.
Absolutely. The building would block that. The building would block any view from the next door.
And then the other piece, because not only will that, but there'll also be noise that sort of comes over the, comes over that building and then into the neighbor's yard. So, and so just, I'm sort of stating that as a, as a fact, which I know you'll also be sensitive to as you work with your, with, work with the neighbors. And so if I also understood from, there's also going to need to be some work reestablishing, because it isn't, there isn't much there now, the, the buffer that sort of comes down before it goes to the, I can't call that a lake, but a pond that's right there. And so I assume this person, the applicant is going to do something significant there, and not just some scrub bush.
Absolutely. The, you know, requirements in 17600 are pretty robust.
They are.
And so, you know, this property owner inherited this situation from a prior property owner. And so it will be a significant improvement over, over the existing condition. And it'll honestly probably be a way better condition than even existed prior to the clearing.
So that was really my piece, that A, we're going to make some, we're going to make some, some intention, we're going to be intentional about putting a buffer next to the, to the house that's next door to it.
Yes.
And B, we're going to be intentional about improving the water, the buffer, the water protection, I mean, whatever that thing is, the water, the buffer along that, that little stream there. And there's still a realization that both the convenience store and the shed are non-complying, non-complying uses at this point when they get used again.
They're, well, they're, they're, they're Class A, so they're by, by right, but it's the location non-conforming structures, this one, yeah.
Because they're empty, right? They're empty right now.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Jim.
Welcome. Thank you. Just one additional question. I hope I didn't miss this somewhere, but can you talk a little bit about building height limitations? I guess they're determined by this rural area.
Yep.
Okay, so you're capped at that. Okay, gotcha. Just want to double.
And you're not coming here asking for a higher building?
We'd have to rezonate to do that.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that we weren't coming in here trying to move that in there.
Yeah.
I just got thrown a little bit by your section. That's what, maybe a little nervous, but.
And they, should, it shouldn't be taller than 35 feet in that section, but no, we cannot build taller than 35 feet.
Got it. Okay, perfect. All right, that was it. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. I'll now open it up for public comment. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? None? Is there anyone online? All right, sounds good. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Who would like to start us off?
Sure, Chair. I'm quite familiar with this. I actually knew someone who owned, whose family owned this property back in the 1700s, so I've actually had some fondness for it before it became this. And so I'm, I am pleased to see that it's being used. I was saddened to see when there was no one in the commercial structure, because it's, you know, we, well, maybe you won't recall, but there was a conversation at the other end of Black Cat Road, which is just sort of around the corner. I think it was the market people, the, whoever they are, those gas station people, who wanted to put a gas station over there, and that did not go forward. So, yeah, Tiger Fuel, thank you. So being able to put something in this area that hopefully the convenience store can come back, and there's, so there's some, there's a few gas pumps there, I think would help to bring some life to that area, or help to bring some conveniences to that area. And, and so I was pleased with that, and hopefully the gentleman who's going to do this will think in those, along those lines, except for just a parking lot for his equipment. And I also, I also feel much better, and I'm saying it yet again, that the applicant will be intentional about providing a buffer to the neighbors next door, who have been living in that area for a long time, and there's been nothing there. So this will be a dramatic change for them, once he, once they have someone coming in there on a daily basis.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion, comments?
I just think in light of the conversation we're going to have next, I think it's important to bring up the conversation of whether, you know, this sort of use should be a by right or for performance-based use in the future. And I, I think it should be. I think this is something we actually want to encourage on the rural area. It's no longer kind of, you know, appropriate use, I think, of our growth area. I think, I don't mind the sort of use in the growth area, but it's priced out, right? And it is, it is supporting, this is, this is what I would consider a form of agriculture in many ways. And I think it is appropriate for the rural area. The only exception that I would say is that if someone is doing something like producing dyed mulch or something that would have water quality impacts, but I think we should consider, as we go through the comp plan, thinking about making this easier for people.
I have a thought on that, but I don't want to, well, why don't I just comment it? So it's not that I disagree with that. It's just I think we need, as we think about the rural areas, we think about like last, last meeting, we had the gray. And I think a similar comment was made that that might be an appropriate use within the rural area. Now we have this, and we're saying this might be an appropriate use within the rural area. I think there's a little bit of camel's nose under the tent that we need to be thinking about. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that if this is a discussion point, we should, you know, as we go into the comp plan, we should be thinking about what exactly we're saying. Is it anywhere in the rural area? Is it in an area that's more developed? Or, you know, there might need to be parameters around that.
Well, I think that's a very excellent point, which, you know, I think, I don't think that all areas of the rural area are made equal.
Right.
And so.
Agreed.
Leave it at that for now.
Great. Any other discussion? Not, somebody like to make a motion? I know this is in my district, but I'm happy to. That's someone else. Go ahead, please.
I move to recommend the approval of SP 202400006. Piedmont Grounds Management Landscape Contractor with the conditions as recommended in the staff report.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, we have a roll, please.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Karazan?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Klaver?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
I mean, Mr. Murray, I'm sorry. I said Moore, but I meant Murray.
I do it all the time. I've found he answers to both. Great, with that, we'll move on to the work session. Thank you, Mr. McCollum.
Thank you.
And this is work session CPA 2021-2, AC44 Comp Plan Update, Structure.
The board doesn't stretch over, so we're going to switch seats.
While we're waiting on staff, I'll just take the opportunity to, and since I just used the word "structure", think about how we can structure this. Well, I would just encourage us, I know staff has put forward two questions for us. One is, are there aspects of proposed comp plan structure that are missing? And second, for scheduling purposes, which key issues within the comp plan does the Planning Commission believe should be a focus of future work session discussions? I would encourage us, since it probably could take us eight or nine hours if we get into the details of those things that may be missing or areas that we may need to focus on, rather than focusing on those areas, unless staff says differently, I think we just name those areas, and there'll be an opportunity for us to focus on them in the future. Fair enough?
Thank you for that clarification. Think that, that's what we're looking for.
Great.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Michael Barnes, Director of Planning. I'm here with Tanya Schwartz and Duber, our Planning Manager for Long Range Planning and Transportation. We're pleased to be back in front of you with plan structure and a project update for the AC44 effort. Sort of talking about where we've been and where we are now, as you'll recall, in April, we were wrapping up with you all and the board on a series of, of plan chapters, each chapter having some goals and objectives that were sort of vetted out of a long Phase 1 and Phase 2 process. And, you know, they were based on input from both the general public, as well as other stakeholders, and of course, the Planning Commission and the board. Recently, I think one of the things we were doing at that time, still, we were trying to run several aspects at the same time, was to develop sort of the actions that would undergird those planning goals and objectives. We were continuing our collaboration with the chapter teams, and our chapter teams are basically the other departments in, you know, in, in the building, as well as some of our external agencies, service authorities, schools, Blue Age Builder, Blue Age Health, et cetera. And anyhow, what we kind of were realizing as we were trying to create these action steps, there was, there was sort of cross-cutting in their nature. They were sort of like cutting across several of the, the chapters that we were, had, the framework we had presented to you all previously. And that there were also multiple departments sort of implementing some of these actions. And it's sort of the structure that we had sort of initially sort of conceptualized of having these eight chapters was maybe better set if we sort of moved away from topic chapters into what we're going to call plan elements. And we'll get into that a little bit later. But at the same time, senior management was really pushing us to have a little bit more of an innovative and easy-to-use format in a plan. And so those two kind of major efforts sort of led us to say, let's make sure we got the structure of the document in a well-thought-out outline so that we will be able to make it easier to use and easier to read, especially for people who aren't going to make the investment to read the whole thing. And that's been a major effort for us. And I think the other thing I would just say here at the beginning, I'll touch it on the end, the end, is, you know, our process before, we were going to go through each of these chapters and sort of bring them to you, and sort of the action steps and work through there. I think our, another major thing we're going to do here is we're going to come later in the year and actually bring you the whole draft. And so you'll be able to have, we'll work through it again, but at least you'll have a view of the document in its totality, and that will like, give you some of the idea where we're headed, sort of answering maybe some of the questions that wouldn't be in front of you at a given work session, for the context, if you will. Another important thing is we sort of like transitioning from the stuff in the previous document. There's some key terms that we're trying to refine. You recall, we had a framework that we were looking everything through. Obviously, we had climate and equity as major lenses, but there were these frameworks of green and resilient, thriving, you know what I'm talking about. What we were also sort of recognizing is, we were using terms that weren't sort of like in a, defined sort of nomenclature, and we were kind of using them in different spots and using the same term. And so we needed to bring some clarity. So what I'm trying to show on this slide here is some of the major change work. We, we had that term "framework" previously. Now we're calling them "guiding principles". We had brought you these toolkits of like, activity centers, or community design guidelines, and something supposed to replace the neighborhood model. That's still there, but we were putting this in the second chapter, or second part of the document, in what we're calling a "place-type framework". Again, I sort of just mentioned about having these topic chapters. We're talking about plan elements now. We had had lots of, well, not lots, we had many goals, and we decided to try and create a goal statement for each of these plan elements. Sort of what are we trying to achieve with the, with these 10 elements that we're going to be moving forward? And finally, we've been talking about big moves, big projects that would, you know, run across several different actions. We're talking, calling those catalyst projects, trying not to be used much jargon. As far as the structure of the document, it's really got three major parts with an appendix at the back. The first part is intended to provide context, and I'll go through these things as more in the, in our presentation, but just introducing them to you now. This idea of a place-type framework, this sort of land uses, the land use map, activity centers, rural area, development area, that, that's sort of major sort of divide, if you will, sort of like how things play out geographically within the community, sort of like, what's the chessboard? And sort of describing that and some of the policies for, geographically, where our policies get applied. And then the final thing is a plan implementation. That's going to be very much what you all spent a lot of time with, the goals and objectives and the actions. Finally, the appendix will have some of the small area plans and other planning or other documents that maybe are related to other departments' efforts, economic development or biodiversity, those things will be found in the appendix. So again, those three parts that we were, that we see on the last slide, this kind of summarizes that with guiding principles, this framework, the, the wheel, those colors, those are the policies for what we want our community to be like, and a reader should understand, you know, what is it that the county is trying to achieve without having to read the whole document? So hopefully this first part will really be able to tie that together. The second thing, again, is this sort of gra, this geographic component, the place-type framework, the framework for where and how we want to grow, where we want to provide public services, and how do we want to protect our resources, both in the development area and the rural area. And finally, this third section, sort of the implementation, really driven by these plan elements, these 10 topic areas, if you will, of how we'll work towards taking that vision that our community has and implement it and support our growth management strategy. Final thing, this is kind of a little bit of a throwaway slide for you, but I, your current plan weighs in at a little over 900 pages, and maybe some of the speakers. And, uh, maybe some of the speakers points, it's quite a extensive document and it's, it, um, has the potential to be conflicting internally, just daunting to read. Uh, and so here's an interesting word conference thing. You look at like Charlottesville and Charlotte, North Carolina, they're around forty thousand words in their document. We're close, we're over a hundred and twenty five thousand. So, uh, trying to brevity is, I think, one of the things we're trying to work with in this, uh, this plan and trying to make it more accessible. I'm going to move now to talk about those sections. Um, I'm happy to take questions from you all. General questions now, and I'm actually happy to, as we move through this stuff, if you have questions as we're going through it, um, we're prepared to dialogue with you as we go. Um, so I'll just open it up right now with what I just presented. Is there any fundamental things or you guys want to get into the details?
I have a question, but others, anybody? Just one quick question. Could you go back to the key refinement slide? This is like one of the, yes. So, w- one, where it says multiple goals per element, one goal statement for each plan element. And then catalyst projects. So the implementation, sorry if I'm not tracking this, where does the implementation, plan implementation fit inside of that list? And maybe it doesn't.
And so previously.
Please state your name.
Oh, Tanya Sworzen, we're planning manager, uh, for the county. Um, so we have our goals, objectives, actions. That's what you're used to talking about. Um, we took those goals. We now have the one goal statement. So in that part three, that, um, Michael was just talking about, all of those things will be discussed in that part three. So you'll have a goal statement, you'll have s- a list of several objectives and actions.
I got you. Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, I always found the planning toolkits to be problematic. And it's interesting that we rebranded everything else but didn't rebrand those. It seems the content of planning, uh, of the planning toolkits was fine, but it seems like it elevates them, the topics within those over other potential topics that could have been included that would be relevant to that chapter. Can you speak a little bit to like why we would continue to elevate those particular toolkits? And, and elevate them over other potential topics that could be in there?
What other topics would you be thinking as far as have that context?
Well, there was a lot of discussion given to the rural area, for example, um, and, and preservation of the rural area. It, it actually was called out. Um, and you'll get to it later in your slide about, you know, conservation strategies, for example, that itself could have been a toolkit. So it just, it takes some arbitrary topics and it seems to elevate them. That where I, I don't think that elevation is necessary.
I see. Um, the second section is really supposed to, uh, growth management policy is one of the principal bedrock animating, uh, principles of the county. Uh, that really serves as the basis of that second section. And the idea would be to, for the development areas to sort of like, again, sort of geographic components, uh, setting the chessboard, if you will. So in the development areas, you have, um, your land use types, you have, um, the activity centers where we're going to try and encourage, um, more density and intensity of growth within the community and sort of how the, um, our objectives and how we'll be working to provide public services. It kind of like sort of establishes a framework for that part. It does the same thing for rural areas. I mean, that's, it's, 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 you know, the same part of this, uh, of the second part of the document. And so I guess the toolkits in some respects, um, were driven towards, you know, some of these very specific, um, components, but they, we see them having this geographic aspect of how they, you know, within the development area, activity centers will act like this. They will, you know, uh, be areas where we'll be encouraging uh, a variety of uses, walkable, you know, even more walkable than we would normally be looking for, higher density, et cetera. Does that get, uh, so the conservation component of it is, um, and thank you for giving me that one example. Um, certainly in the rural areas, that will be articulated as one of the bedrock principles of what the rural areas are there for. The actual how we're going to do that conservation component, you'll find that in the plan element in the third section, which is talking about the environment. Conservation of the environment. So we'll be talking about a little more of the details of those action steps of how we're going to get, you know, whatever individual topic we're trying to, to, to get drilled down on, that'll be in that third section. But the, the second section is really to provide that, the con, um, the, um, probably with the word I'm trying to find here. Yeah, it's, it, it, it really is setting the, um, the broad, um, strategy of the county for the rural areas as opposed to something much more specific.
I would, I would argue that the, the, that the planning toolkits themselves failed to do that. Um, that the actual thing that does that is, is the growth management policy. And very short shrift was given to that in terms of the, the wording of that and how, um, how we come to make sure that the growth goes in the growth area and the rural area stays rural. And so that guiding policy, I think our current comprehensive plan is a great example of a very well thought out, um, growth management policy that has, um, this sort of explains why each one is each and, and how those go and, you know, how we encourage one to be the other. So I think that that's, that seemed to be missing, or at least elements of that seemed to be missing in the last draft I saw. Um, and I think as we look, um, I think so much emphasis was put on this planning toolkits that, that that core conversation of how we, um, how we establish, um, encourage growth to be in the growth area and rural uses to be in the rural area is, is kind of missing or didn't get the level of attention that it could get.
Commissioner Murray, I think we're on the same page. Maybe the words on the slide don't, are, are a little misleading. So we'll take that into consideration for our next presentation. We are looking at the, at that second part as being a way that we, the growth of, the growth management policy is implemented, um, distinctly in the gro, in the rural area and the development area.
Specifically articulated.
So we'll make sure that's clear.
Can you go back to the slide that we were just on where I, I want to, I think it's an important point that's being raised here. Um, and so the planning toolkits, which I, I certainly appreciate changing the name, whatever we land in and it, it's a development framework, right? That's you're, you're, you're giving a framework to how you're going to develop the growth areas. Right? So the, the development areas and I, you can't really have one without the other in terms of the rural area and the development area. If we define how we're going to grow, so what is, what is it that we need to accommodate in the, in the planning horizon? And how are we going to get there? So this begins to de- develop certain, the activity centers, community. So that gives us the framework. So I do like that term framework versus planning toolkit, which I think was kind of nebulous. So I do appreciate that change. At the end of the day, we need to get to a point where we are maximizing the capacity in the, in the, in the development areas. So then we can have the preservation that we're looking for in, in the rural areas. So, so they, to me, they're, they have this, this symbiotic relationship almost, although it's been, but that's what we need to get to because we need to have a plan that developers can see a path to how we can get to the growth that we're looking for in the planning horizon. Without always thinking that we have to grow the area. Now, if the plan shows that we have to grow the area because we can't meet it, then, you know, then we get, begin to address that. Which then begs a question is the rural area is not all equal. You've heard that before. You've heard it earlier today. And that's where the conversations need to happen as well, right? They're, they're not all equal. The, the, uh, the biodiversity plan uh, layer is, I think, an important one that we still haven't, uh, completely gotten to. And how that gets incorporated in, into the, into the plan, but it, I think it does have this symbiotic relationship and we need to figure out how that, that relationship is, is better distilled in the plan. I like the direction. I like calling it a framework. And if people begin to see the relationship between that framework for development and how that leads to preservation of the rural area, I think that's an important relationship that we, that we need to make. Because we need to maximize infill. We need to maximize, uh, adaptive reuse, uh, opportunities that we have in the county.
Yeah, I would, I would just, uh, plus one to that, but also add that I think we're checking both boxes in your recommended bo, areas of focus. One is structural, right? That I think was just raised. And then the second one is that this is clearly going to be a primary focus of future work sessions. Uh, just to throw that out there.
Okay. But what are in these three key parts? Um, the first one is, you know, um, the introduction section. But what we really start talking about are what are the existing conditions? What are the trends that our community is facing? And how do these lead to, you know, what are the concerns of the community? What are the issues that we need to be addressing? Um, the county does have a vision with, uh, six principles, uh, that, uh, basically is, you know, intended to try and advance, uh, our efforts to, to, to meet the challenges that we have in our, um, in our community. But the expression of the, that vision is through these guiding principles, the green and resilient, the welcoming and equitable, the thriving and prosperous and connected and accessible. And the idea being here to really express how we're going to implement that vision with the, through these guiding principles, uh, as well as all those efforts that we're going to be taking. And this is a, at a relatively broad scale, but at a scale that, um, somebody who is not going to potentially read the whole document, but come away with a clear understanding of, of what is it the Almarl stands for and what does Almarl want to achieve? Um, the priorities, um, uh, that are for the county of what actions are the ones that we want to sort of deal with in the, in the short term? What are the, the priorities that will, um, drive us to meet those guiding principles? And then finally, we'll, this section will conclude with sort of letting the reader know a little bit about, you know, sort of foreshadowing what parts two and three will have in them so that, uh, as they begin to read that, they understand sort of the structure of the document and where the document is headed.
And just to, um, tag on, the intent is that part one could be a standalone document. It will be part of the comp plan. It's all part one through four, one document. Sorry, one document. Um, but it could stand on its, on its own as forty, fifty pages that you could read and get a general sense of where we're headed.
Like a long executive summary, kind of.
A long executive summary, just within some additional detail, so you get more of the story.
But I think to your point about more of the story, what it also would do, I think, from my understanding of this is it will tie everything together for you. So it also holds everyone accountable that the next parts have some linkage to the greater whole.
Exactly. That's our intent.
Do you envision that this part might start to look at how you compare to similar sized localities anyway? I feel like that comes up a lot as a question. Um, do you feel like that might be some content that we might explore putting in this section?
Um, it's an interesting idea for us to pursue.
Good. Um, and then, and there's probably pros and cons to that. That's a question that always comes up. What, what are other people doing, right, in these certain areas? And not to nitpick the numbering here, but I would say county vision probably would be right under introduction, um, as we move forward. To kind of set the stage, so.
Thanks.
Moving on to the second part, um, so we're talking about the framework, you know, I think, uh, front and center here is this rural area and development area structure. And really talking about what is the growth management, how, and, and how's that an animating principle? That will, will, will drive many of the policies within the document. Um, again, sort of the land use designations and this idea of the activity centers, that's kind of where that toolkit starts to come in. It's sort of like, at least, you know, in the rural areas as well, but for this particular, what you're seeing here is like the future land use designations. And moreover, these activity centers that are going to be, um, sort of applied, uh, you know, above the land use designations as real target areas for us to provide public services. Um, and to try and increase the density and intensity to use the, the development areas as efficiently as possible, um, and, and as wisely as possible.
As well as focus our transportation infrastructure and our network, right? We want to make sure that we're getting to those areas where most people want to go, um, with the, in the fastest, safest, um, most direct manner.
And then finally, sort of the community design guidelines start to be, what should it look like? And what are the, the design components that, that make that successful?
Yeah, I, I generally support the, all, all these ideas and the ideas that were addressed in the toolkits, activity centers. I think it's a great idea. Um, and I, I support the inclusion of that. I think that also when you look at things like agriculture, um, ac- activity is not just simply commercial and residential. Activity can also be things like, what are the areas they're used for productive agriculture? What are the u- areas that are productively used for biodiversity conservation? Um, there's different kinds of activities. I'd like to see the breadth of the way that we think of activity in the rural area expanded.
I appreciate that idea because that's something that's been a little fuzzy in my mind. And the way that you put it is starting to get, help me focus it a little bit more. Because I've, I've been wondering about this idea of an activity center in the rural area. Um, and how one, how might we carry that idea forward? So I think you're starting to help make that more clear.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the, the applicant that we had prior to this, right? You had an example of, you know, someone doing landscaping. That is a, that is a need. It's supportive of the rural area. It's supportive of the county. It's, it's a consistent use. Um, there should be places where we encourage that kind of use. Um, there are agricultural support industries that we don't really acknowledge that as a, as a use or designation in the county. Um, people that do canning, um, that do, um, um, do processing of food or do other things that would, that enable agricultural, agriculture to occur. Um, my grandfather owned a mill, um, for, for many, many years. That's the certain thing we don't really have support for in Almarl County. So as you're thinking about activity centers, I'm just, that's what I'm talking about.
Can I, um, just ask for a little more clarification on number two place type framework? I get number one and number three. Those are clicking with my brain cell. This one I'm, uh, a little bit gray on. So, so, I mean, I have number one, sort of laying this out. This is what the county vision is. This is where we're headed. This is the content of the document. You could use this as a longer executive summary in a sense, plus some things. Number three is here's how we get it done, right? What's number two? Is it, this is the existing conditions? This is where, this existing condition is where we want to head? Could you help clarify that a little bit?
I keep coming back to, it's like, where do you want that implemented? How, you know, gra, geographically? So, I mean, Alani's point of ha- having some of these types of permissible uses in the rural areas. A part of it is things you want to avoid and part of it may be transportation. It has to be tied with the transportation. Uh, it has to be on a sec, you know, a, a primary road or something like that as opposed to a, a secondary rural road. It starts to set the rules of where these types of uses would, these types of places, type of activities would, um, be, the county would like to see them found.
So is it going to, so just, let's just pick, since we're picking on rural areas a lot tonight, maybe let's shift to development areas. So in, in the development areas, the where, is it that number one document structure, the plan context talks about the vision for the development areas? And then it talks about the development areas in the framework plan and says, this is obviously where they would go. And this is some of the vision items that fit within the development areas, this is some that might fit within the rural, et cetera. And related to public services, are we saying? What, what are we saying there, we're saying we have them, we don't, we need to have? Goal for them?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm sorry.
No, 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 public services is sort of transportation as well as. Parks and Rec, where we're looking for parks, you know, trying to tie those probably closer to some of these activity centers. It is talking about as we have, we've become more urban, providing some of these. Activ, yeah, some of the public services we've been talking about in the form-based code area. Of, you know, some of the more urban services that you would have with a, with a. Public Works Department or something similar to that. But the idea here is essentially. You have a vision for what you want in your community. The question is, is where, where within the community do you want to have that vision implemented? It's, it's a, it's a nuanced application of our vision and allows us to. Sort of emphasize, you know, especially getting back to the development areas. The activity centers is an area where we really want to try and create a hierarchy that will allow us to. Especially in the more regional. Activity centers really push the envelope on density and intensity. And then correspondingly have the transportation and other public services that support that intensity of, of development.
Got it, so, so under the transportation, for example, if you'll also speak in this section about. Transportation, transit, traffic in rural areas? Or that will become part of the implementation plan in the next section?
Broadly speaking, yes. Especially when we're talking about, so the rural areas about transportation. I don't think we will be emphasizing, providing a lot of sidewalks and, and other types. I mean, it's, it's part of the provision that's in the rural areas somewhat. To Mr. Carazana's points of the semiotic kind of relation is, it is, it's the other side of the coin. And I think you need to sort of express as a, as a community. Not only what our vision for community needs to be, but where and how that vision gets implemented.
And I think the other part of what we just, what we thought. Part two could achieve is our priorities are different or maybe different in the rural area versus development area. I think that's what you're starting to get at, you know, transportation, maybe that's number two in the development area. But for our, our rural area, maybe that's at number five. I'm pulling numbers out of a hat, but you understand, I think you get what I'm getting at is our priorities might be slightly different. They're important, but how we prioritize what we want and where we want it is going to be fundamentally different. In the development area versus the rural area. So that this part two is really to help us understand how that works. For each area.
So you got the what, you got the where, you got the priorities of those wheres.
And, and, yeah, right.
And we're going to the how.
Right.
Okay. Yes, sir. Anybody?
Yeah, so, what did you write down?
I'll go after you.
Okay, so I, to provide something clarifying too, I think one of the things I'd really love to see. Is to, to really talk about how service looks different in the rural area, in the growth area. If I live in the rural area, I can afford to grow my own food, I have space and the ability to grow my own food. If I am in the growth area, I might have to go to a farmer's market or grocery store to get my food. So you have the same service, but it looks different in the rural area than it does in the growth area. And I think too, in the growth area, it's more about providing new services, building new infrastructure. In the rural area, it's really about do no harm. Not, let's not degrade the services that we already have in the rural area. And so I think, as a, I think that as opposed to thinking service is just simply that built infrastructure. Service is also, you know, in the rural area, the bill, the ability for me to walk on a gravel road, for example. Have a safe place to walk or run, that is a service for me that I have, I don't want to lose that service. That's, there's a correlation in the growth area, which is a sidewalk, I'm never going to get a sidewalk in the rural area, I don't expect it. So you have the same service and it might even be a useful exercise to actually build, build a little grid. And say, this is what service looks like in the growth area, this is where the corresponding service looks like in the rural area. So we can think, so that we're thinking not, you know, about trying to provide. So we don't get into the trap of trying to provide growth area services in the rural area or the other way around.
And I think part of what you're speaking to is, unless I'm wrong here, section three, right, or part three? So you're starting to talk about implementation, strategic implementation within certain areas.
Well, but I'm also talking about, it says provision of public services.
Got it, okay.
And so, you know.
I got you.
Yeah.
I play a scenario out here to make sure that I'm following what. It's a, I'm probably the slow one here, it's still fuzzy to me, like the, the explanation definitely helps. But if I, if I get this document, that's, let's call it fifty thousand pages of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. How much is dedicated to this part? Cause on the surface, it almost feels like it could be woven tastefully into either part one or three. And I'm struggling to see as it stands out on its own, the, the strength of it. So if you could talk a little bit about that, and the explanation has helped, but I'm still struggling a little bit. Is it a fifty page section? Hard question, I get it, but is it this big, this big compared to one or three?
I'm gonna just guess that it's somewhere in the sixty, seventy-five page kind of realm. A little bit longer than, than that front part, that first part. And I will, if it makes you feel any better, it took me a good month to wrap my brain around part two. And it's, it's still a little fuzzy, we're still working through all of the details of it. So I think it'll be easier to explain, we thought, you know, this sort of structure would start to help. Everybody, including ourselves, see how these things fit together and see the big picture. Instead of just focusing on a piece at a time. So. And, you know, I, I don't know that makes anything clearer for you, but hope, you know, hopefully our implementation component, our part three. Is a little bit longer, it's going to get into a little bit more detail, but that section two is, is going to be pretty critical.
Awesome, thanks. Can you go back to two for a second? Sorry, we'll, we'll get off to. I just want to walk through your, your two point one, two point two, two, three and four. Making sure I'm following the logic here. And so rural areas, development areas, you'll have some basic goals definitions, right? High level, right, so we're talking high level still in, in, in section two, right? So future land use, so, so here's where, so development area. I'm going to use an example here, let's use Croze. So that's, part of that is in the development area. So as we start to define the activity centers, which we have a Croze master plan that defines activity centers, it defines areas of density. You know, the land use designations, it's there. We get into private and public services. Wolfly lacking, particularly in terms of transportation. So are you going to begin to hear, begin to talk about? How do you unlock the development opportunities that are in those activity centers in Croze, for instance? So how do you unlock the higher densities that we talk about in the master plan? Cause right now we have a master plan that's not achievable with the infrastructure we have. So I think that's one of the big problems that we have, we have master plans, but we don't have the infrastructure to support them. So I think it's important to at least lay out a high level strategy here. How do you begin to unlock that, which then in three, you know, you get into the implementations, you can talk about that. And of course, that's, that's tied to a, to a, a, a funding strategy. And, and so how do we begin to fund? Because we, we're not going to get to the densities that we're talking about if we don't have the infrastructure. So that's a key component of this, and I think in two, you can begin to lay out those strategies. High level strategies, you don't have to go into a lot of these, if I understand what two is about, right? It's not how we're going to do it necessarily, step by step. But it's the, the main goals that we need to achieve. And if we're going to desert, say, this is the rural area, this is the, this is the development area, here's activity centers and here's land use. How do we make sure that we have the infrastructure?
And I, I think that the, I like, you, you're using the word that kind of like, it's going to outline some of the strategies. We're doing, certainly, what, how do you undergird the, the activity centers? And what policies do we need to be emphasizing to support those? I think that's very much what I think see in this, this section. Talk about to, to provide us guidance as a community on, on what we need to do to support. That growth that, that we need to, to have in these activity centers.
So, so was I, I mean, so I use that scenario just to, to wrap my, is that basically the?
But I, I would, you know, when you mentioned Croze, for example, or you take Rio in twenty-nine, you know, wherever it is. I think there is still some. Aspects of the small area plans that will be tackling, okay. In this corridor, this is, we need to do X, Y and Z to, to support this. And we need, we need to have the shared use path in this area linking these two activity centers.
Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting that that lives in two, but, but you, you need to provide the, the high level strategies on how you will achieve that.
Yes.
In, in, you know, in, in the different growth areas that we have, the different activity centers and so. So is that?
Now, this is, this is also a good board to use there too. It's like, what, what is our strategy, what's our, why, what are we thinking, how are we going to prioritize stuff? This is, this is sort of the game plan, this sort of describes within the community. This is the chessboard, how are things going to play out? These are kind of broadly speaking, the ways we're going to try and get them, these are going to be the rules to, to achieve that.
Thank you, see, I didn't use up all of my fifty minutes. Oh, was it five minutes?
For you, for you. Any other kind of working comments so far?
Do you care, so, so the piece here for me is that I view this as sort of a simultaneous equation. That we're trying to get, trying to support the county vision using. The comp plan is sort of the framework, is sort of the big, the sort of the big model on how we get there. And so when, in, in a previous life, when I had to build these things. Looking at sort of two point one, two, the four are sort of the various sort of variables that we're using to be success. To that, at the end of the day, we should equal this county vision. And many of those variables, we don't own. The county does not own them, the county will probably never own them. And so trying to then sort of rejigger the equation. So that we can get to a successful, to a success with the variables that we own. Is really pausing me some, some, some heartburn on this.
Can you just expand on what you?
Yeah, for instance, I will say that you should do no harm regardless of whether or not it's the development area or the county or the, or the rural. I find that sort of that, I find that there's a false dichotomy here that, that this community lives in. That somehow the kids in the rural part of, and I live in the rural part of county, so I will own that. That we're the fair haired kids and the people who live in the development part of the area are the kids whose hair is trying to be fair, fair. And so there's this piece for me here that when we talk about how do we increase? The built environment in the development area. In my experience to date, when a developer comes and brings a project that might do that, all hell breaks loose. The, the surrounding communities, absolutely, they, they, they bring every bad behavior. That is possible for privileged people to bring to that discussion.
This is in the development area?
It's in the development area. And as a result, what we see happening now, and, and so I want to be really clear about what I'm saying here. I am not saying anything bad about the local developers. What I am saying is that we've had significant projects that were being done by outsiders. And the only one that's come to fruition right now is the Gray Star one. Where we've had three other, could have been very big and important project that the people who were putting together said. Said, I'm not doing this because I can't get through the hoops and ladders that the community is putting me through. So this whole conversation about are we going to have a fully built environment? Feels as if we should take that variable and scale it back. Cause the environment in which we do the built environment is not ready for a full buildup. Or for, I shouldn't say full, but is not, is not ready for even close to the maximization of available land in the development part of the area. Then would I look at the fact that, that this is not about the county? What this comp plan is doing is signaling to people who will bring resources to the county for projects. So if you tell me you want to do a project that's going to need additional public transport. The county doesn't own that.
Oh, I see.
The county can't bring, we can do with the micro thing, which I think is being, is what's the last, last numbers I saw, is, is, it is a resounding success. But it only has a small footprint that it can, that it can carry. When we talk about place types. We do not have a park in the county that a person can easily walk to. We've got the Charlotte Humphreys Park or wooded area that will always be woods. It will never be anything but a, an urban wooded area. I can't get a kid, I can't get a kid and her, and her mother to a park that is not a top park. And the misline knows that I have this thing about top, top lot parks, I just find them, they're equally the same as dog parks as far as I'm concerned. I don't mean that, that kids are dogs, but I'm saying is that this whole sort of delineation that it can only be this. For it to be considered part of the development area. So what I'm wrestling with here is how do we get to a success? How do we sort of make, balance out this simultaneous equation? When, or maybe you're going to do this, when hopefully staff will say, here are some variables that we don't own. Or we don't control, but in order for us to get here, we're going to have to have more control over. So we're going to have to figure out how to get buses up to your neck of the woods. Or we're going to have to figure out how to get buses to places that were, that to, to date. Don't have any sort of significant bus coverage to it after five o'clock in the afternoon. And so who's going to want to live there and have to work someplace else? The other place, and so I'm just going to come to this real quickly. When we talk about the regional plans that I believe is, is really an element up on page, on, on place type framework. I don't know what those regional plans are. I don't know if we're in fact building housing to be able to supply. Workers to places that aren't in Alamo County. Are we going to turn the table in the way that Green County, Augusta County, Fluvanna and Louisa? How they've been supplying workers and housing for us? Is there a piece in there that this equation needs to be balanced? So that in fact, we are providing housing for economic activities that are happening outside the county? Because when you tell me on this page, whatever that was there, on plan implementation, no, that's not the one. It was, yes, it's just this one, when you say regional.
No plans?
Regional plans, when I saw something in the, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District, they're talking about economic development. Outside and amongst the entire community. How does that come into this, how does that get balanced into this achieving of the comp plan? Because the comp plan, as I, as I'm sort of negotiating from that document there to the new document. That was setting up and continues to reflect a desire for the status quo. And when you start doing, as you've heard me say before, when you start talking about future casting. When you start talking about the density that you're trying to make sure that you're using all your density property properly, that's not, that's not the status quo. That's looking at a community that's going to have to step forward with budget. That's going to have to stop, step forward with community narratives. That's going to have to step forward with seeing itself in a different way. That I don't think the comp plan can bear the burden for that. That's a much broader change than a comp plan.
Thank you for that, I think that it, it brought something that. Re, I think reinforced some of the, the, the comments that I made when I say, how do we unlock? Because there are hurdles and those hurdles are because, you know, it's not like, you know, I work for UVA, well, UVA owns all of those acres. And so for us, how we plan for our future is a little bit different. Right, because we have a lot of more control over our land use. So I get that it's not the same when you transfer it to the county. However, the purpose of long range planning is that we can begin to identify. What are those hurdles? How do we begin to it? So what are the areas that we want to grow? Right? To what density? And then? Who are the partners that we need to bring in? Whether they're other state agencies or private partners to begin to unlock the possibilities of the higher densities. The the creative projects of adaptive reuse that that we can begin to look at or infill. And they require partnerships. If you look at other places, government is not doing it all. You need, you need these private entities. So we shouldn't be thinking, you know, hopefully we're not thinking that this is. The county is going to do it all. But if we think it's only what the county can do, then we're going to do very little. In all honesty, so so it's. The long range planning is that we so we're not waiting and being reactive when that, you know, out of. Out of state developer comes in and says, I want to build, you know, a thousand units here in a mixed use community. But we have no infrastructure to him to get there. So everybody around around them is going to show up and complain absolutely. However, and and many of them are complaining for very legitimate reasons. They may not have the infrastructure and and all of a sudden. To get in and out of your home, it's a it's a problem. So and some of them, of course, are going to complain regardless, and we're not going to be able to deal with that. That's only so much that but we can begin to deal with. How do we make sure that for the areas that we are proposing for growth? We begin to have a path to develop the infrastructure. It's not going to happen day one, but at least let's lay out a path, the strategy or, you know, the the guiding principles to get us there.
So if I can come, let's talk about sort of just three different things. So so the Barnes Lumber Plaza has been in limbo for many, many years for a whole host of reasons. Okay, and so the question is, how could you in that particular area there? That has been identified by both a private and a public entity to be the new town center of Crozak. There's going to be some some odd things there because you're never going to be able to get across the the railroad tracks. And so it's going to be this this interestingly sort of challenging place to have a town center. What someone said we're going to do it, the counties made it a bit easier for that to happen. The uh, I should say, the foibles of being a private developer has come in, has has played. Into the delay, some of the delay that's taking place there. But then let's go up twenty nine. Twenty nine has six lanes on it. The infrastructure was put there in anticipation of that being part of the growth area up to Hollymead or even further up the Hollymead. And and it's laid out on the east side of twenty nine. That that's where the growth was intended to go. We've got some growth there because of the river bend.
A lot of residential.
Yeah, a lot of residential growth there. But you can't in order you can, I mean, you can take your car and go to Hollymead and go to the food line, or you can take your car and try and get across. And get across twenty nine and go to the Hollymead Target stuff Harris Teeter over there. But as far as it being something that says, this is where I want to sort of establish some roots. Every time someone's come up there to say, let's put a small community there. We had one community say, you put a fence in the back of your property. So those people can't come over into our part of the our part of the community and they have public roads. And they've always had public roads and there's two schools over there. So this, this is where I'm coming about that no matter, we put the infrastructure on twenty nine. I think, yeah, six lanes, six lanes up twenty nine and some sidewalks on the west side of twenty nine, big sidewalks. In fact, I'm sure my colleague would tell me that that's probably a multi use path, but it's a sidewalk where I come from. So they put these big sidewalks over there. And still, the community says, we don't want those people. To use the infrastructure that the county, the county and VDOT said should be there. That's the piece I'm talking about. So I agree. You've got UVA has got the fortunate ability to be able to control more of the variables in its long rate plan. Because you own it, you can fund it, you got a triple A bond rating, or you got all the various things that make it work. The count and you own a transportation system. And you own a transportation system. And you also own some housing. Yeah, right. Well, no, UVA owns it. You wish you did. Yeah, you wish you did. What I'm saying is that how do we sort of balance a comp plan for success? When many of the critical elements that would give like that would allow us to do long lane pan, long range planning? When you don't have sixty percent of your budget going to support the schools? And you don't have and and you have very little, if any other means, except for a private partner, private public partnership. To increase the amount of funds that you can bring to the table. You like telling me, yeah, I want to do some business with you, but you can only put. What? Five percent up and you want me to come and do business with you and all you can do is contribute five percent to the project? This is it's an it's an untenable sort of future. And that's that's what I'm coming. That's where really what I'm coming.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. If this project could change human nature, then you know that we would be in a completely different. But there's a people are not going to like change. Right? So that that's going to happen regardless. But we need to set up the framework to allow, hopefully, if this is a successful document. It allows for the private public partnerships and begin to think creatively. How do you get across that railroad track so that you can unlock the development in the lumberyard? Right? I mean, there's ways you can get across and you got to work, you got to work with that that Buckingham over there.
No, it's hard. It's not. I'm in Wisconsin, Virginia.
Well, that's not good. That's right. So now that Virginia has made it easier to to have those conversations. So so I I just think that that's hopefully that's what this document would head is that it creates that framework. That enables the partnerships that need to happen in order for us to be able to to develop the way we 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 should in a meaningful and intentional way.
Can I just underscore one thing just while we're focusing on our two tasks here tonight? One of them is focus of future work sessions. And that idea of unlocking, I think, is one of those areas of focus, right? Because we're we're talking again about rural areas not being created. We're talking about infrastructure. I think that's a work session is how do if if we're serious about focusing development in the development, the growth areas? How do we do that in the most efficient way? I can see that.
Yeah, I still got to have some parks.
Oh, yeah. But I could see that as being a good, a great work session conversation because, you know, there are some lessons learned. That we've shared that some have shared here. And I think there's also some lessons learned from other communities. To Commissioner Claiborne's comments that we could learn from and potentially implement here. So good discussion. Want to go to part three?
Maybe. Oops. So third part of the document, plan and implementation. But the meat here is three, two and three, three sort of like, you know. We're going to have these ten elements. You see those of them right there. Conservation environment, healthy communities, thriving economy, transportation networks, parks, open space. Historic scenic cultural resource protection, community facilities and services, housing. And then two others that are rural area, a development area. You'll remember one of the things we sort of recognized was that um some of these other topics are sort of like. Cut across multiple things. Um, and that you may end up with something that. Is more specific to a rural area or a development area concept that was sort of like. If it's not found in those other ones, it needs to be, you need to have a home for it. And so that's kind of what that's about. Again, if we're up in the second section, we're sort of setting out these large strategies and goals and and what and. And how we think the what are the rules for doing that and, you know, what are the partnerships we're seeking on and on? This is sort of like down to the specific actions that we need to take to to achieve that. Again, we sort of talked to you a little bit about each of these elements having a goal statement. What are we trying to do with conservation and the environment? What are the big objectives? In the in protecting the environment and conserving our resources? And what actions do we need to take to to do that? And then in the next slide, sort of really gets to. Well, I'll wait before I get to that, I'll just sort of talk a little bit about that. You know, we're very much the plan is about implementing both. Will be implemented by both the public and the private sector. Uh, we recognize this is more than 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 the county's um action plan, for example. And that the other aspect we're really trying to put in here is the action types and responsible parties. Who's supposed to be trying to do this stuff in the timelines for getting that done? You see this example that the town has put in here, um, coming from another jurisdiction. Of action types, you know, this is a regulation we need to do is a capital improvement project that we need to do. Is it a policy we need to 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 implement? Um, and and sort of how how do we get that done? I think that's sort of our our um goal here is to truly make this sort of action oriented. And that within that you would end up having these catalyst projects, these priority actions, things that we. That the the community says this is where we sort of need to start. Or continue forward if we've already been working on it. Discussing a little bit how those things relate to other plans that the community has already adopted. Project Enable, um, the biodiversity plan. And also sort of what was our, what is our approach for? The future area plans that we need to do, the small area plans, we've been calling them. What do they need to be? What you explained this so much better than I do, so why don't you go ahead and talk about that?
So we've been doing in the past, we've done master plans for all the different areas. And the idea here in this section is to really um define. Be clear about what we can do with those master plans, what the process looks like, what the. Pardon the simplification, but what are the colors in the crayon box? Right? So what can we actually affect on that sort of hyper local um area study? So we'd really like to um just. Document the expected process as well as the anticipated um update. Cycle? And what the criteria may be for updating a master plan or small area plan? You know, we want to make sure that we're we're doing these updates on a regular basis and in a fair and equitable basis. So that's the idea of of getting that future area plan approach in the comp plan. So there is some consistency as well as some expectations set.
And rewriting those plans. It's how we address those plans that exist.
Right, it's not rewriting, not as part of the comp plan. The idea is, hey, we know we're going to be updating these. Going forward, so how do we do that and what are we going to address?
And how do we implement what's in those plans?
And how do we?
Gets more to that density issue, right?
Right, it's and it's about setting expectations, right?
How would we, how are catalyst projects going to be determined? And so who who's going to come up with? You know, the the very long list of catalyst prop and then how will it be prioritized? And will that be a com? Will that be a community activity or will it will it come from the supervisors and then we? Or will the supervisors in this group sit down and have that conversation at being informed by staff with the community input? It's it's that kind of, it's that um. That I'm sort of pondering because it's it's a it's a big word. It's an important word. But who's the person that says what color is going to be used in the crayons?
So um excellent question, thank you. And we have, that's one of the big discussions that we've been having here. And finding ways to tie that towards strategic plan. And then in that cycle of what that means to the conference to the capital improvement plan. I consciously, we consciously didn't put the details in here. We're still kind of like working on some of that. But 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 the idea really is that. Uh, the comp plan is like a a list of a lot of things we want to try and get done in the next twenty years. And then we have our strategic priorities that we want to try and get done in the next. Five years and sort of revisiting that and sort of that sort of sort of speaks a little bit to. The the last thing in the comp plan amendment, how and when do we update that to? Because you have to feed that cycle. And I think it's it's trying to be more um. As to the extent we can be uh more results oriented and trying to like prioritize. Hey, this is the result we need to work on next.
So then would it be fit? So would it be fair to then sort of just sort of push a sort of a basic assumption? The three point one, two and three might actually become various departments budget plan. So you could see a department saying that if I'm going to be charged with something about uh healthy communities. Under plan implementation, but that's going to what that's going to sort of start driving my 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 strategic plan and what I request for budgeting.
I want to be careful how I answer that.
No, 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 but you can say, Julian, that's kind of right.
Julian, that's kind of right.
That's all you need. Because I you've got.
Just answer every one of his questions like that.
But I mean, in all seriousness, I the it's. It's been an effort in the community to have strategic plan. We got a lot of things going on. How, you know, what's the work plan for the staff? Where are we going to invest our money and how are we going to get those things done? Hopefully, it starts to be tied back to some of the things that that Mr. Carazano was speaking about with uh. You know, how are we unlocking those objectives that we, you know, removing the barriers to to making. Some of these priorities um actually implemented.
That's a good question about three point three. You touched on it a bit, but the metrics tracking and reporting. It's uh, it's not three point seven, it's three point three. So it's in the midst of that and unless I'm interpreting this wrong, it sort of means, how are we doing? And if things aren't working out and those locks have not been fully unlocked or there are opportunities we hadn't picked on, we should make some changes. It feels like that is something that might also. Follow catalyst projects, right? And then also relationship to other plans and future landing. Because then it's unless it's maybe two option, two times that you check in. But I would just want to ensure that we have that.
Yeah, I think you're you're right to. I was I was interpreting it as you're identifying the matrix and the way you're going to track it and how are you going to report it? So one of the how you identify it. And then you're actually doing that, right? So is is one of your is your catalyst project? Working the way you intended? We don't want to get into the cycle of redoing things that don't work, right? So so are things working? And if they're working, how are they working and what what was successful about them? So but you have to identify, you know, how are you going to do that at some point and then and then actually do it, which obviously you can't do it until. Something's been implemented.
Yeah. So go for it.
No, no, good.
Nope, I was going to move this on to the appendices, but you got.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. As I've listened to the discussion. I'm curious, where do we start to talk about the comprehensive plan borders? Particularly around like Charlottesville, I feel like it's kind of hidden here. Would that be in the part two at the high level piece? How do we want to sort of treat that? But could you talk a little bit about that for a second? I feel that's pretty important with Charlottesville being right in the middle of our county. Or even if it was rural area, development area, those borders and any of them, like, how do we start to address? That in an intentional way? Has that been thought through in terms of how we present that as content?
Two things I would say. Go ahead. You want to go first? Two, two things. One is the activity centers and a lot of these activity centers that we're talking about are hydraulic and twenty nine. You know, their lower pantops, their uh some of the stuff, you know, Fifth Street Center, you know. There there are these interfaces that are happening with the city and we're talking about those. Transportation, especially um with a multimodal network or a transit network, I think needs to be considered more holistically. We did meet with the city and sort of talk with them a little bit about um. Where we were headed with the plan, what we might be able to show on our plan that is, you know. How some of these transportation networks sort of go into the donut hole, if you will. It's something certainly I think that we need to do better job of is um describing what is a regional multimodal network. We and we've spent a lot of time working on a regional transit network of late. So I think that's those are a couple of ways we're getting to that. Are there other areas that you're that you're thinking of that with that doesn't quite cover?
I just want to make sure it's intentional right now is kind of feels like happenstance, right? And so you talk a little bit about the border with like the city of Charlottesville, for example. I'm not sure if we've ever talked much about that as a collective group, but it sounds like the staff have. But where does that kind of fall into our plan as we're looking at? But where does that kind of fall into our plan as we're looking at 20 years down the road? And I know they're working, I guess they finished their comprehensive plan, but where where does that start to intersect? So we know that we're kind of on the same page and lots of stuff. Does that question make sense? From a holistic perspective opposed to parcel by parcel?
I think that's what we've been doing as part of a court ongoing coordination with the city and making sure that we're not impeding what they're trying to do and vice versa.
Okay.
I think that's where you're going with that.
It sounds like it's happening, but yeah, I guess we just probably have never talked about it as a commission.
Right, and if, you know, if you'd like, we'd be happy to, you know, summarize some of those conversations as well.
To be clear, I mean, consideration of borders is important. And I think, I don't know, maybe that's part of the plan context, part of that part one.
Where I've experienced that and perhaps my colleague, Luis could speak to this. I experienced that around the MPO tech, around transportation.
Okay.
And not necessarily around the function of the built environment. But definitely how we move across the jurisdictions, you know, those of you who I will warn right now, don't try to go to Whole Foods. Because Whole Foods is from from that, from 20250 bypass all the way up to hydraulic road. It is off limits to anybody who's not wearing a yellow vest. So but it's those kinds of conversations that we've had.
Yeah.
Um, certainly with the regional transportation and trying to look at a, how do we move people across the community in a way that works across the the two jurisdictions in UVA? If UVA comes to the conversation with the with the with the bus service, then all of a sudden you have a very different sort of idea. I know that there's been some conversations about how do we move students? So is there a shared way to move in the urban part of the a part of our two communities? Is there a shared way for us to move students so that a bus stop from Alamo doesn't have to go into the other side of the city to move students? So I think it's much more in sort of practical ways and not necessarily in the built environment ways. And I can't speak for everyone else, but I don't know how many people within the decision making framework of the county would want to move in the direction that the city has made as far as zoning is concerned. I don't necessarily know that that there is many of us who would be willing, I know there's probably one of us who's not here right now, who would be willing to move in that direction. But I don't necessarily know that there's a shared approach to to our living environments in that way.
Yeah, the only only maybe caveat to that that I might suggest is when it comes to infrastructure and you talked about transportation. You know, also water and sewer, because you've got city water, you've got city, you've got county water. How do the how do those things all play against and together in the in the borders? That and also just considering density, right? I mean, there may be borders between the city and the county that are higher density. And if those are areas that the built environment would be more accommodating in terms of the county establishing and increasing the growth there, then that helps to unlock, I think, in some of those cases.
Yeah, continuing that theme of borders, it's it's not just, you know, there's other borders too, like, you know, you have the the Almar County and the state of Charlottesville, you have Moore's Creek, which is a contaminated stream.
Yeah.
Has the T M P L on it. So there's discussions, there's discussions of conservation borders and how do we deal with that issue?
Yeah, shared possibly.
And then when we talk about parks and recreation, you know, I think about too, when we when they pulled up the map of Croze, we talked about multimodal traffic in Croze. A lot of, a lot of people pointed out that, you know, we have these connections from Croze that go all the way to the Shenandoah National Park. So, you know, that maintaining those connections that go beyond the boundaries of the growth area of Croze, they say, here's a greenway that extends out into the rural area that's an important greenway. Or an important multimodal corridor. So I think thinking about things beyond those those borders, I think. And even if we go to the biodiversity action plan, one of the themes in the biodiversity biodiversity action plan is actually wildlife corridors. And so.
Yeah, good point. All right, we heading into appendices?
We'll be able to come back later to that, okay?
Yeah, for sure. Well, no, if it's the same thing, go for it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, plant plant implementation regarding the 10 areas of focus that we have here. Some are kind of like spot on in terms of being defined, and some are a bit more subjective, I guess, particularly healthy communities, thriving economy. Talk a little bit about what those two mean in this context.
So we struggled with healthy commu- we communities, what we were trying to capture. And I think we have since renamed it to resilient communities. What we're we're trying to capture was the health of a community, not so much of the health necessarily, the health of an individual, but the health of a community holistically, and how can we help our community members thrive and and work with or accommodate natural disasters. Not only how do you, you know, how do you deal with them, but also how do you recover? So that's where we're going with healthy communities or resilient communities. What was the other one, thriving economy? Yeah, so this was previously named, I believe, something like economic development. But we wanted to look at it, it we were trying to back out and say, hey, this is a more holistic idea of not just economic development, but a thriving economy for everybody.
So some of these names have changed, but this all came from the workshop that we did a year ago. We were putting the high priorities on, so it's that I'm assuming that this is still is a carry forward from that, but you maybe change some of the.
Yeah.
And I was I was asking because with climate equity being like the two cannons, I feel like we're we're just not bold. Is there a place to be bold about that? So like with a lot of the climate goals, a lot of it comes from like good design, right? We can't really mandate that, but how do you encourage it? Very rarely am I impressed with applications from a design standpoint where there's so many missed opportunities where we could do that. I'm curious, can we weave that in and through some of this or equitable communities or equity? Someone that's kind of sprinkling it here, but we're never bold and it's two of our cannons, right? So I'll just put that out there for food for thought. I don't know if I have an answer right now, but it'd be nice to see something around climate and equity woven into here. If we're bold about rural areas and bold about, you know, parks, it should be should be beefy. I shouldn't have to search for it, so.
My concern about that though would be if we pull climate out of conservation. There's a lot of situations where what may seem like the right strategy in terms of climate change, like building a large solar farm may not be the best conservation strategy for biodiversity or for water protection, for other other things. So you can get, you can get climate policy wrong by think of it narrowly. So I actually appreciate it being under a conservation and environment, however, I I do really appreciate your thought about being bold. And actually, you know, there is more enablement for requiring things than than we're using. For example, the ability to require low impact development, that is something that we can do as a county under the Chesapeake Bay Act, but we just haven't.
And perhaps it's something in section two that's elaborated on. I just, I feel like it should be somewhere and we should say what we stand for, right? And not have to read between the lines and so.
I think part of this is that realization that this stuff does cut across multiple of these elements. I think you'll see that coming through in the actions that we're trying to do. To its relative boldness or not, well, we'll assess that when we start to talk about those.
Yeah, I mean, I struggle with that whole thing of I I think about some of these topics and you can very easily almost flip a coin and decide which which one they go in. Like some of these things, some of the biodiversity action items could very easily go into parks and recreation, for example. And so I think we definitely need a see also hyper instead of hyperlinks at the at the top of some of these sections so that we can link to the relevant sections and the other parts.
There comments in part three?
I want to give short shrift to the appendix. It's not quite as exciting perhaps, but it is where these, you know, regional plans that are being referenced, you know, transit or small area plans that we're talking about, initiatives that are undertaken by departments. And then I think we wanted to talk about at the at the introduction and up at the beginning, we sort of talk about sort of the development of the plan itself. But this is really to, you know, to document the the process that we've gone through to sort of underline its community outreach and the other engagement that we've done to to build this plan. And finally, a glossary of terms.
The next steps. You want to talk about the next step?
Yeah. So right now we are going through these different parts and trying to pull the language together, tighten it up, make it clear. And we're going to be taking the next month and a half or so to really start to tighten that that language. We'll be coming back to you in the fall to get at some of these key issues that we still need to talk about before we can produce a final, a final draft of the entire document. But our intent is to give you a final document again this sometime this fall that you'll be able to have at least a month to review. And we will come back in the winter to start having those detailed conversations about the specific elements and the implementation of those elements. And the and the document as a whole, you know, does it hang together in the way that we've all talked about? So that's that's sort of our charge over the over the winter. We anticipate our next public engagement round will be this fall as well. Probably September, October, if I'm looking into my crystal ball. And we're crossing our fingers for a final plan document ready for spring, summer, next next year.
Can I suggest that when you so so this, the fall, winter, 2024, there's a lot of big topics there, right? And land use. So however you break those up, well, my suggestion is break those up in into into pieces, bite sized pieces that we can actually have a work session on and and sometimes we we try to put too much in a work session and we really can't can't get to the meat of of any one particular issue. So you might want to think about what those bite sized pieces are and maybe it would be good to review it, say, here's the here's how the plan for the fall, winter breaks out. And and you got whatever six, seven work sessions or our remaining work sessions, I have no idea how many you know, slices you're going to come up with, but I would recommend that because I I know we've struggled with that in the past.
You'll be seeing us a lot over the the next, the fall and winter, because we do plan to break those up into bite sized pieces, so.
Can I ask a question about that when we do, so this is to structure. When you do break those into those bite sized pieces, are we talking about a bite sized piece, for example, being how we unlock density in the growth areas? Is that a bite sized piece? Or is it, we're going to look at this issue under plan objectives, place type framework, plan implementation? And how how do you, maybe you don't know yet, which is fine, but I would just just to underscore that fact that as we look at work sessions, it would be helpful to have a framework, to use that word again, around these work sessions. And so, yeah, and just so that we have an understanding of how that would would play out, I think might be helpful.
If I understand, you'd you'd want us to know, given you've you've just set this framework on how this work is going to be, you'd want at the end of the evening for people to understand, these are the elements which is going to go into this particular thing.
Exactly.
So the people, so that we can see from a holistic, from a from a holistic standpoint, how this, what we've wrestled with and how that would be implemented in the comp plan.
Yeah, exactly. So another way to say it is use the structure of the comp plan to to provide guidance for the structure of the work plan or the work session.
I think that was the intent.
Okay, good, great.
It was interesting that this concept of you know, unlocking the development potential of activity centers or talking. We've talked about the rural area a little bit and many different venues over the past couple of days. So whether we come back to some, I I think the document itself will probably what we lead with, I think that's our intuition.
Great.
But if it's something else we need to get to, maybe we can, we'll give that some consideration.
Yeah, and I think a little bit of this is going to become clear as we see more information, like I'm holding out hope that part two is going to become less muddy to me. As we start to see how it actually, you know, applies to a given subject, right? And follows through. So I don't, I I just want to, not to rush us, but are there aspects of the proposed comp plan structure that are missing? I'm assuming you all heard what we've said and it it makes sense for me, it's just about part two, really, just understanding how that all plays in and how it can be longer than part one, that is a little mini executive summary, because I don't understand quite the content, I guess, to be honest. And maybe I'm just missing the obvious. In terms of areas of our focus for future work sessions, we've talked about that quite a bit. A few things that we didn't touch on, and I don't want to open a can of worms here, this is just stuff that I was thinking about. And as we think through it, I'll just say, you know, we mentioned resilience, we mentioned solar. I didn't hear a whole lot about solar, but I know we'll have a solar ordinance, so how does that fit in to the comp plan? Crossroads, traffic, school, it's infrastructure, natural resources, aquifers, things like that. Just sort of big picture resource related items that oftentimes fall under rural areas, but also apply to some growth areas at times. But I know we'll touch on all those as we go through, but just wanted to mention this.
And I guess I will just throw out for consideration, you know, we're, this will morph over time as we come to you. We'll have, we'll identify other topics that we haven't even talked about yet that we might want to focus on in a future session. So, you know, it will be flexible.
And I thought one more caveat there that we've given you a lot of terms tonight. We may still continue to like seek and some of that was some of the feedback we got this evening on some of this stuff. But give us a little bit of flexibility as we move forward to try and and really get you the best document possible.
Great. Any other comments from anyone on the subject? Wrap up comments?
Well, just just one thought, and this this does get back to the unlocking type conversation is that I I believe pretty firmly from a planning perspective that that overall what guides future land use is what is the the most economically viable allowed use on a property? So as you look over time, if whatever's the most profitable use of that, that that land, that's eventually what it's going to be. And so I think that that's an important conversation here, whether it's the rural area or the growth area. If the most profitable allowed use is solar, it's going to end up as solar. If the most profitable allowed use is a farm stand or is a is a shopping, is is a shopping center, that's what it's going to be. So I think, you know, how do we remove the barriers? How do we make the uses that we want be the most viable uses of those places?
Can I put a caveat on that? So the one caveat I want on that is that taxes have a lot sort of economic elements for for an individual. And what her what her income is also says what the land's going to be. So if I have the ability to minimize my taxes to the county and to others by putting it into land use, then I'm never going to ever have any any push to to develop the land. There is nothing that's going to say I'm going to develop this land, but because of my income, I can take advantage of a tax structure by saying, let's put this in thought and and agriculture and forestry.
Well, that's because the the incentive has changed what's most economically viable.
So that's what I'm saying, so it's not necessarily what's the highest value of the land. You have to take into consideration the ownership of the land. Because person who has very little access to to discretionary income or to wealth is not going to look at ways is not going to be as a. To is not going to be as aggressive and seeking ways to shield their wealth. And so there's a bunch of things in our tax and in the county's tax code that allows people to shield their wealth. That then takes that land out of its best and highest use. And those would be the kind of things that I'd like to look at because to take the static out of the system. We, there's a lot of static in the system that's about worth wealth preservation, that's not about economic use of the land.
Yeah, not to get off on a um tangent here, but I think also a big part of that subject is related to location. No, so in other words, if you're looking at, I mean, there are certain areas, and again, not to get into the sort of profit or missional objective. But if you're looking at certain areas, it may make sense and may align with the mission of the growth area to maximize development in a certain spot. That actually increases the profit options of a developer. So but maybe in the rural area, that's a different consideration. But I think that that can get dangerous when we start thinking about that as a leading element, but I think it's worth, it's worth a consideration, yeah. All right, thank you, great job, staff, it's a lot, it's a heavy lift.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Um, all right, let's move on to committee reports, are there any commissioners with committee reports?
Yep, I don't have any.
No, Lon?
No, no.
All right, that was easy, um, review the board of supervisors meeting, Mr. Barnes.
Hi, um, yeah, I have nothing to report to you because we haven't had a board of supervisors meeting since the last time we met. They took their July break and they'll be coming back on the seventeenth.
Got it.
And we'll be making this this presentation to the board on the seventeenth as well.
Oh. That'll be interesting to to hear how that goes, yeah, that'll be great. Um, awesome, AZ forty four update, I'm pretty sure we're.
Do you like another one? Let me start my computer back up.
For probably good. Any new or old business, new or old business? We're flying through these last agenda items. Items for follow up? All right, well, with that, I will adjourn the planning commission. I have to the Tuesday, July twenty third, twenty twenty four, six P M meeting, thank you.